Good evening. I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. City clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Morton. Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno. Mayor Proton Zamora.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. Item number three, public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda only. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment, in person, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we don't have any members of the public that want to speak today either via Zoom or in person. However, we did receive an email from Gabriela Martinez. The email was in regards to supporting the Aquatic Center. The email, the full email is available in the office for anyone that wishes to obtain a copy. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number four, study session, Aquatic Center.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it seems that someone raised their hand after you closed public comment. Would you like to allow them to speak?
Thank you.
We have Laura Covington.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I don't know if this is the proper time to speak or not regarding the Aquatic Center.
Yes. Headed speak? Yes.
I just don't want to speak out of turn. I'm really surprised that there aren't more public residents or whatever that are speaking about, to me, a very, very important issue. And having been a resident now for going on 48 years, I think I can speak with some expertise. And I love my city, otherwise I wouldn't be here, obviously. And I work in the city, which makes it a double bonus for me. Getting to the issue of the pool, I think that this is one of the perks, per se, that the city has offered. My son has utilized it for several years. He's grown up using the pool. He's worked at the pool. Both my granddaughters have gone through swim lessons. I myself have learned to swim with the amazing instructors that you have. And that was in my 50s. And I just think it would, it would be a horrendous, horrendous mistake to our community. Speaking also as an educator at Lake Center Middle School, so many of our kids in the district, not just Lake Center, but in the district, utilize the facility during the summer. And as a teacher, living in the city, and I run into my kids all the time, I would hate to just see them not have a place to go, especially on hot days, and, you know, be roaming the streets. I'm not saying they're troublemakers, but kids will be kids. And I just think that, you know, I look at this beautiful parking lot that you made, and I thought, okay, so you made a beautiful parking lot. I think that the swimming pool is just as important, if not more so, than a parking lot. And I'm just really upset, per se, because my water aerobics will not be available, not only to me, but to many residents also. And I don't know, this, I really think that the city council needs to do some serious thinking about the perks that are slowly but surely being taken away from us residents, one at a time, one at a time. And I just don't think it's fair. I think we need the pool. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? We have one more person that wants to speak in person.
Sure, come on up. State your name and address.
An address?
Yes.
My name is Myra Vargas, and I live on 11131 Ideling Street here in Santa Fe Springs. I wasn't prepared to come up here and speak, but I'm a little surprised that nobody isn't speaking on behalf of the Aquatic Center, so I felt like I should. I grew up in Norwalk, and I commuted to Santa Fe Springs for the beautiful city and all of the things that they had for the residents. I went to Santa Fe High, not on a waiver, because I was denied. So I had to use my aunt's address to get there because I was a swimmer. And where I learned to swim was the Aquatic Center. Sorry, I'm like really emotional right now. So I learned to, I learned to swim at the Aquatic Center with really great mentors. And if it wasn't for the mentors that I had around me, I would have not continued my education and where I am today. I learned how to swim. I was mentored by really great people, such as John Mora. My senior project was on sports medicine. Then I can just continue to calciferatin and got my degree in kinesiology. Because I worked at the Aquatic Center, not only as a lifeguard, but as a manager. I continue my education in teaching. So I am currently a teacher. And if it wasn't for the pool, I would have had nowhere else to go. I didn't, would have not have learned this extracurricular activity, and I wouldn't be the person that I am today. Now, moving forward, I worry about our residents because of our older adults that live in the city and their quality of life. They don't have additional resources like the other cities do. And I think it's important, not only for our children, for our young adults, but for our older adults as well, where they have somewhere to go. And it's really unfortunate that, looking around the city, just being here, every strip mall looks the way it does. It's absolutely disappointing and disgusting because we have slum everywhere, and it's really sad. So the pool, just one thing after another, is just, it's just heartbreaking to see that we're losing such a great facility, and I would hate to see it go. So I just wanted to come up here and share my thoughts with you. I'm like really shaky, but I'm glad I came up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Myra.
Madam Mayor, we have another speaker.
Thank you.
My name is Carrie Cobos. I've grown up in the city 50 something years now. I started with swim lessons when they were at Santa Fe. John was actually one of my instructors. I knew Leon back then, too. When the pool was built in 85, that's when I became part of the swim team. So I did swim lessons. I set a swim team, I was a coach, and I was a lifeguard for 10 years. Did everything growing up. My mom learned how to swim at the city with numerous of our guards there. The city part was great, Parks and Rec, loved them, council, always loved them. Always had the employees back, always was there for the employees. And that's one of the things I loved about the city. So when I left the city to pursue other things and finish my education, when we lost the pool to, I don't know, La Marada came in for a summer or two, I came back as the cashier and front office. And I did that for a few years. And then, you know, little by little, things have been changing. But I think for the most part, the best time of my life was working with the city and at the pool. And not have it there, to not have the jacuzzis, to not have the programs, sucks. Sucks for residents, sucks for, I know, employees and lifeguards that have been here forever. And I think that not having the pool or not advancing the pool and having a little bit extra for the pool is not a great thing for the city, is not good for the residents. And it makes the city, in my opinion, look like it doesn't care. So to have the pool, to have the lifeguards back, to have that stability in the city, I think is the best part of the city.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have Bill Rounds.
Thank you. Hi, Bill.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I didn't come here to speak tonight, but now I feel compelled to speak as a longtime resident and a few former council member. You know, we've always talked about a destination for our residents. We're looking at a hotel, we're looking at businesses to bring in, food places. Well, a pool's a destination, right? The kids look forward to it every summer. The parents look forward to it. And all the classes that we've held here, you've got former and current lifeguards in the, in the city here. You know, I don't know which way the direction is going to go by the city council, but again, I'm in favor of an aquatic center, whether it be renovating the pool as is or recreating it. You know, we talked about a splash pad years ago. It's been on the CIP project list. You know what, maybe recreating the aquatic center with a pool and a splash pad? I don't know. But, you know, and something else, I know that a city, they're always looking at ways, we gotta bring in revenue, we gotta bring in revenue. But sometimes we have to provide services to our residents, too. It's not always about making money, okay? The cities are here to provide the residents. You look at all of our neighboring cities, they all have pools. Yeah, I know that Pioneer, they're building a nice state-of-the-art pool. And people have said, well, our residents are going to go there. I disagree with that. They're still going to have to get in their car and travel a couple miles versus jumping in their car and driving down to the corner to the aquatic center. So when this item comes before you, really reconsider what you're looking at and what is, what could be taken away. 65 years, the city will be 65 years old, May 15th. The city has come a long way, and it's built its infrastructure, it's built what we have today. Don't start taking that away from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is via Zoom with the last name of Witron.
I'm sorry, who?
Last name Witron.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and members of the city council. My name is Irma Witron, and I'm speaking today on this study session item that related to the pool in the city's aquatic center. I've only heard a couple of the speakers, but I do agree that this is a community amenity that should stay in some shape or form, that the city should study this further, should seek input from residents as far as design. You know, there's been different concepts being thrown out there in the last year that I've been part of the CIP sessions and other community meeting sessions where they talked about a splash pad, whether it should be renovated, whether it should be rebuilt 100%. I think all of those, those ideas should continue to be explored. I think it'd be nice for the residents to see some conceptual drawings, some renderings, some very, something very basic where residents can, can see the concepts, perhaps that summers and, you know, concerts in the park or other community events, that there could be a tent set up where people can, can have an opinion on an actual drawing, an actual concept, and look at the price tags that belong to them, and then you'd be able to get input, not only on, on the wishlist of what should be there, but also, you know, let residents know what it will cost to get there. And I think that would be a good way to get input from the residents. I, I personally think that we should continue to have some type of aquatic community amenity in the city of Santa Fe Springs. And, but that we should look at the whole picture. So thank you for your time and for bringing this item as a study session.
Madam Mayor, next we have Diana Armandares.
Hi, Diana.
Hello, I'm Diana Armandares. I've been a resident of the city for over 35 years. And again, I think, just like touch about what Bill said, you know, I do understand that this, there is this great pool that they're going to be building for the county, and I think that's wonderful. But part of being a resident for so many years and actually going through the aquatics program, that's, that's top notch. You can't, you can't beat that at any county pool, at any other city facility, or any other different city facilities in other cities. And I think that it's just so important, it's just such an important part of our community, of who we are. Again, I went through the aquatics program, my sisters did, my nieces and my nephews did. You know, and up until COVID, my son was also a part of that program. You know, even being able to see these lifeguards that come through the program, that become lifeguards in the city, you know, that's, that's what our community is about. And again, you know, we can, you know, count on this great pool that the county is going to build. But, you know, residents as it is, you know, it's hard to get into our classes. Our, our aquatics program is awesome. It's always packed. You know, there's, oh, it's hard to get in, even as a resident. So having to, you know, try to go out to another city in hopes of getting these classes and getting, you know, those great instructors, we're going to lose the quality of that in our community. And I really, really hope, you know, that when you guys do this study session, you really look at what the options are and how we can, you know, better our pool. It's had 37 years of wear and tear, you know, let's, let's do something great that's going to make it last another 50 years. Because that's really, that's really what we've all been about in all of our programs that we do in the community. And again, I just really hope that you guys do take that time to see what this pool and these programs mean to our residents, or like myself and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Madam Mayor, next is Peggy Redumas.
Thank you. Hi, Peggy.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Peggy Redumas, and I've been a resident of the city before it was a city. So as that, I have watched the students and the children grow up in this community. The pool has been really important to them. This is, a lot of them walk to the pool. No, they don't have to ask their parents, can I go and get in the car with you and have you drive me over here? And with the price of gasoline, a lot of parents in the city can't afford that. I think you should keep the pool because it has been a real plus for a lot of people here. You've had a lot of kids that have grown up, established working habits, and have gone on either to other things in the city or other things within the state. So I think you should really keep this pool. I don't know what you want to do with it. My tax dollar would be good at just remodeling the whole thing. And I think you would find that that's the way a lot of people think. Also, the reason you don't have a lot more people here is, like me, a lot of people either haven't heard about this meeting or learned about it yesterday evening. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Peggy.
Next, we have Jaclyn Aguayo.
Hi. I've never done this, so.
Can you state your name? Can you please state your name?
My name is Jaclyn Aguayo, and I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs since 2005. My kids, they went to elementary here, they went to high school here, they work for the city. But I want to let you know what I learned yesterday. I was talking to my priest. If we don't keep our community together and that pool brings us together, we're going to be nothing. You know, we're family of, I have family of, me, my husband, we have four kids. If I don't keep them together, they're going to be gone, right? You guys have to keep us together, and that's the part of our city to keep us together. So please, keep it for us. I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Well, thank you all for your comments. And now, I would like to call on Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
Madam Mayor, council. Real quick, Noe, just before you start, I just want to let everyone know that the council has brought this together as a study session to bring dialogue, so make, to inform the residents and inform the community what's happening with our pool. So, you know, we don't, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for all you guys, but I'm not trying to speculate that we're going to close this pool because we've been all working diligently to talk to our assembly members, our state legislators. We've been going crazy to look for other grants. You know, this is as a whole, I believe, all five of us are all on the same scent, are on the same sense because we have Fulton Wells, our senior communities, that actually utilize this pool, and it keeps them active. I know I spoke to Mari Sella, and, you know, we have staff that have been talking to all, you know, different parts of our community. So we are well informed. So don't think that, hey, this is something where we're going to take the pool away. What we're trying to do is to get you guys involved, which it did. So, you know, we just want to let you know that we are trying to do whatever we can to keep this pool and to make sure we, we get the proper funding for it. And that's what this is about. This is what a study session is, to make sure that we, you know, we open the eyes to the community and ourselves to say, what can we do as a, as a whole to help each other out? All right, so just to give you guys that response, hopefully I'm not stepping on anyone's toes up here. But this is something where we're all looking at it, and, you know, as council, we wanted this study session for you guys. So thank you guys for speaking up today, and we appreciate it, and.
Before, Noe, before you speak, I wanted to give an opportunity for our council to say any comments that they have briefly so that we can go on to your presentation. Any council, would you like to speak? Okay. Who wants to speak first?
The OG lifeguard over here.
Let's go, John.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for coming down to the study session. And Peggy, hopefully this did not get out at the last minute, but I did see this on Instagram and the city's webpage. So it was out there, but maybe it just got out there late. But, you know, we just got to make sure that it does get out to everybody for any session, study session we have, not only this one. But when it comes down to the aquatic center, as it was stated, you know, we are trying to find ways to actually keep it. You know, just like you heard a lot of the comments that went on here tonight with people, you know, growing up in the aquatic center, learning how to swim. And it's not only just a place to go and cool off during the summertime. You had a lot of our staff that have, you know, moved up the ranks here in the city, those that have moved on to, you know, bigger and better things, you know, away from our community and our city. But bottom line is, you know, when you had, somebody learns how to swim, they're basically saving their own life if they ever get into that type of situation. So these are lifesaving techniques that we incorporate, and this is completely priceless. You cannot put a price tag on that. Between myself and again, Carrie and LeAnn and May, those that have been at the aquatic center for many, many years, we've heard countless stories of somebody even helping someone who's been choking. Because even as a junior guard, we tell them how to do the Heimlich. They've learned the Heimlich maneuver, save the life. One life, that's worth millions. But it was countless stories that we heard over and over and over again during our learning some program, you know, for the toddlers. Same thing, a mom came in, you know, on a Monday, guess what happened this weekend? Well, little baby, whoever is, fell into the pool. We didn't find her, and she was face up in the water, arms behind her head, but she was floating. She didn't die. So this is more of a lifesaving, I think, facility that we're, we're trying to preserve because that was it. You know, the Molstead fishing trip, I don't think anybody's here that goes there, but I'm taking, okay, sorry. But, you know, I didn't take my boys up there until they all learned how to swim. Because him forbid, they fell in the river and got whisked away. I want to make sure that they could stay afloat until I caught up to them. So this is just more than just like a summer program, but it is an amenity that we provide for the community. Some that we know we intend to keep, we just got to figure out how we're going to do this. But it goes, you know, far beyond just, you know, you know, being there at, you're just during the summertime. You know, a lot of memories that you people have had, you know, just little kids, you know, coming to the pool. You know, it's, it's priceless. But the bottom line is, you know, we're, we're saving lives. And, and I want to make this pool, you know, after we figure out, you know, how we're going to structure it. But, you know, they talked about, you know, destination locations, whether a splash, whether it's a splash pad or a water slide or anything else. But also where people could come in, it's a, I'm losing my thought here. They talk about swim lessons. Our swim lessons are full every single summer, and every single city also has resident preference. So it's hard enough for our residents to, you know, get a swim lesson because we do have high-quality swim instructors here. So everybody wants to come to Santa Fe Springs, even from other cities. And, you know, we don't want to lose that ability. We're going to continue to do this for our city. We just got to figure out how we're going to do it. One of the things that I do want to see again is having our spas come back, you know, therapeutic spas for our seniors. But instead of having maybe two, maybe LeAnn had suggested just one big long one where you could push a wheelchair in there and, you know, provide that for our senior community. But, you know, we're all talking about this. We've got, we're going to still, you know, hammer down our, all these ideas that we have, but we'll figure out a way how to do this. So thank you for your time. I think I should stop talking.
I think it's same thing. We want to assure you, I know for myself and all of us, we don't want to get rid of the pool. That's the last thing we want. We don't want another empty building in the city. We don't want an empty place so we can have homeless people come around and just see years before we might do something there. That's not anybody's intentions here. That's surely not mine. I, my daughters grew up there. My daughters learned how to swim. The famous story I remember is May with the ducks. If you ever wanted to save a duck, go to May. May would always, and those are the stories that, because we have a pool. My daughters will love going over there. I love having my house next to it, and you hear the kids laughing, you hear them playing, you, the structure that they have. The last thing I want now in my turn is not to have a pool for my grandkids to go there. That's not something that I know I personally don't want. I know this, that our council doesn't want that. And I love the fact that you guys are here. I wish there were more lifeguards here of all the stories of everybody that's been impacted by the pool. I think if we really had that, if we really had people that had been impacted by the pool, we wouldn't even fit them in this room. I know that for a fact. I'm glad you guys are here. I would, I personally would like, we're doing this study session, even involve our lifeguards, because no one knows more that pool than our lifeguards. We know what Noe is giving us. But technically, if you really want to know what's going on in the pool, we should ask our lifeguards. Let them be part of a study session, if anything. Let them bring ideas to us, past lifeguards, you know, new lifeguards. I think we need to involve everybody, not, I mean, Noe did an awesome job with the staff to give us information. We're getting what we see, but I think hearing from lifeguards, I think we need to make it a community thing, not just a council thing. And I hope I'm not overstepping anybody's, but I really think that this should be a should, a community thing. What, what do you guys want there? What do you guys see that you guys want there? We want there, this to be something for families. We want this to be so kids aren't in the street, so people can learn how to swim. But what do you guys really want? There's only five of us here, and this information that we're getting on paper from Noe. But I personally, I guarantee all staff, all council, want to what you guys feel, you guys want there. You guys want the two pools, three pools, you guys want splash pads? What do you guys want? This is where I would love to hear what you guys want. Maybe we can have, besides the study session, maybe we can have, you know, our guards there, past, present, and other people involved. Let us know what you guys want and have a community meeting. But we got to make sure people go to this meeting. We just can't have three people in Town Center Hall, and then we can get all the backlash on social media. We need to get people involved and let them know what they want. Because us five here are only going to know so much. Please, if we, you know, we're going to continue this, we have participation from the residents. Please, you guys, please help us help our city so we can have the voice from you guys and not just make it a decision from council or what we're going to get off of paper. So if anything, we'll do our study session, and, you know, maybe we can do something to have what, what the community wants in there, too, and make it a group thing. But the last thing I want is to get rid of that pool. There's too many memories, there's too many things. It's, it's our city, it's part of our city. I mean, we're the only city that had an aquatic center. And look at how nice and classy, I mean, even the snack bar, everything about it was worth, worth coming here. So I know, I don't want my three minutes to be beeping right now. But please, let us help you guys as a community and be involved with us. Give us ideas, because we want to make this work just as much as you guys. And you guys, the lifeguards know more of it than we do. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, I'm not going to take much time. Everybody already knows that, you know, the five of us are not looking to take away something from our community, but add a better attraction. And that's what I think the, the dialogue should have been from the get-go in us getting the message out for you guys to come and give us that input, what we want to see at, at a pool, that to make it what was great in, in the early 80s and 90s and even in the early 2000s. But today, we need to make it great for us again. And that's where I think the message didn't get transparency from us to you guys as a community. But we see how important it is to everybody, and we want it, just like everybody else does. So this meeting is more for, to hear what our Public Works Director has to say about where the pool is, and then for us to figure out what is going to outcome from it, whatever it is. If it's a splash pad with one pool, if it's two pools. But we definitely need to upgrade and get something that's going to make it a destination area for our community again and, and give people the pride of ownership that it once had. So I just want to say thank you guys for coming, and it's very important for our community to keep coming and understanding what we're doing as a council, because we don't have the surprises. But I think the message could have been given a little bit better for the community and for the. Uh, for the community and for the, uh, for just everybody all around. So thank you guys.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you, counsel. I just wanted to say too, that, uh, somebody said that for us to reconsider, but you can see. That our intention was never to get rid of the pool. It's how are we going to, uh, get the pool up and running? And like I, I spoke to our city manager today, my eighteen year old grandson and all my five grandkids have been in that pool. And we don't want to see it go. We want to make sure that the pool stays. I've been taking walks around the pool. I, we were talking about the barbecue pits and the tables and they're not being utilized. So while we come up with a decision to how, what are we going to do to get that pool up and running or the poles and the jacuzzis? Let's utilize that. There's some of our residents that live in apartments that maybe they don't have a barbecue, maybe they don't have a yard. Let's utilize what we have right now and let's get these pools up and running, but that was never our intention to get rid of the pools. We are going to, uh, fight to keep everything that we have. We would never get rid of the, the pools. They're, they're an asset to our, uh, community and to, to all of our residents. And as our council said, I want to thank you so much for caring so much to be here and to use your voice. And also on our minutes that we have. Our recommendations, it says that staff will also be looking into engaging into the community. To gather input on what we are supposed, what you want, as, as we all said. At the aquatic center. So your input is valuable and we will be getting to you to, you know, let us know what you want. And we're going to come up with something, but we're, we will not, uh, we're going to fight hard. We will not get rid of our pools. So I want to thank you all for being here and we're going to continue. And now I would like to bring up our director of public works, Noe Negrete. Hope you didn't have to wait too long. Thank you. And you know, after he discusses, we still are going to have council comments. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just wanted to mention a couple of things before Noe got on there. Um, apologize if it wasn't clear, but we wanted for the last, uh, two weeks, we've had three different posts. To talk about the future of the poll, future not being, that wasn't going to go away is what the council and what we'd hear from the community. So this is the first of a number of public meetings we plan to have amongst the commissions, uh, maybe other study sessions, a potential survey. But you're going to hear a presentation really talk about where we stand, where our potential is. So it really was a, a jumping off point. And we'll continue to approve upon our, our communications to the community. Thank, thank you, Noe.
Hi, good evening, counsel, uh, and Madam Mayor. Thank you for having me here. Just it, it, it's a study session. So. We're here to get input from you, uh, just that we got input from the community. Uh, this is the beginning of the conversation. It's not just one conversation. It's the start of many conversations. We have about a half hour presentation in front of you. Yeah, please stop or if you want to wait till the end, it's up to you. This is, this study session is for you. Uh, to ask questions, uh, as we go along here. It's going to be a tag team effort between myself and Gus Hernandez, Parks and Recreation Manager. And we're going to do a lot of the things you guys covered in your, uh, opening comments, we're going to cover, uh, in this presentation. Uh, we're going to talk about how we got here. Uh, if you don't remember, we did talk about this when we were looking at the capital improvement plan, uh, back in October. In November, I told you that I didn't think the pool was safe enough to open for this coming, uh, season. I'll show you, uh, some of the damages that continues to happen out there. Uh, Gus, uh, will come up here and talk about programming and the benefits of the programming. Uh, and then I will, uh, do a comparison with, um, the Pioneer, uh, where they call it the Woody Aquatics at Pioneer High School. Uh, we had a meeting with them. Uh, I've started discussions already with Pico Rivera. So there's a little bit of, uh, lessons learned. Uh, at the end here, uh, we're, we're going to ask you to give us some feedback. You don't have to make the ultimate decision today. Uh, what we're trying to get after is, uh, what we needed some information as to what we can go chase down. We'd like to do some preliminary design for you, hire somebody to do that and, and come back with costs. Uh, I, I think if cost wasn't an issue, we would already be in design here. Uh, but with the price tag that I'm going to show you here. Uh, that is why we're here to figure out how to move forward, uh, with our pool. Okay. So with that, uh, I'll start here. Again, the pool was originally constructed in March nineteen eighty-five. It's a thirty-seven year old pool. Uh, rough service life of a pool is about thirty years. So we got seven more years out of it than we originally intended. Uh, it's definitely starting to show its age, right? It's wear and tear. Uh, in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-five CIP, we did, uh, allocate some monies, which I'll show you later. Uh, for some potential projects. Uh, definitely needs renovation. Uh, it's specifically the pool decking, uh, and the, um, water infrastructure, the search pit vaults. A lot of spalling of concrete and I'll explain that, what that is, if you don't know in, in a few slides here. And again, uh, we are recommending the closure until the repairs are made due to a safety issue. We don't want the patrons, uh, to be hurt in that pool in its current state. Whole decking, I'm going too slow. Speed me up because you've probably heard this before, but I think it's important for those of you who've never heard this to, to hear what's going on. Uh, that deck is settling, sinking, cracking and spalling. Spalling is basically a chunk of concrete falling off. I got a picture of that. Uh, the deck has been an issue for at least over twelve years. I've, I've been here ten as a director. We've tried numerous different, uh, remedies to try to fix that deck. And, and every year, um, we have similar issues, which tells me that the underlying, uh, um, foundation is the problem. Deck is failing again, and, um, we're afraid of it continuing to fail. So this are examples here, uh, where the deck drains are. Uh, you can see all the different patches that have gone on over the years. Obviously, when you put water on there during the season, that leads to that, uh, further cracking or flaking off. People barefoot, it's usually not a good thing to have people, uh, barefoot walking on concrete, uh, that is like that. Uh, in particular, we talked about spalling of concrete. So on that right-hand side, you see where that cone is, there's a chunk of concrete missing. That's why it's discolored. And what we're, we're, we're fearing is this is happening now all along the edges. Uh, so if you know what a cantilever is, it's a section that it's not supported. It's where the water drains into the pool. And if you go out there today, uh, it's kind of hard to see in this picture, but I'll highlight this here. You see this, this crack. Basically goes all along that whole side of the pool. This is another side here where you see the similar activity going on. And we're afraid that that is going to spall and fall off into the pool and then create a jagged edge for people in the pool, which obviously is not a good thing. As well as on the deck itself, you saw that the flaking of the concrete is happening and that is not a good thing when people are walking barefoot. Now we'll turn it over to the water infrastructure sites. We do have a pump house, uh, that does have, uh. Equipment that makes this pool run. They're mainly only telling you this, uh, just so you can see what we have, but if you do touch the pool. As soon as we touch it, we need to comply with our current codes and regulations. So even if that equipment is operational. It may, it may not be feasible because it's not going to work meeting current, current codes, uh, for that pool, what it needs. So in the large pool, we have currently have two pools. Uh, we have a large pool. There's three filters, two heaters. One new pump, which I'll get back to in the next slide, uh, a search pit for that pump and a chemical feed system. In the small pool, we got one filter, two heaters, one pump, a search pit, and also a chemical feed system. And again, if we do touch the pools, then we need it, we need to, uh, comply with the current code and the infrastructure that goes with it. If you recall last year, uh, the large pool pump needed to get replaced. We ordered it. It was a long lead time. That came in after, um, we wanted it to come in, at the beginning of, or late May, early June, and we had to delay the season. Uh, primarily because that pump came in later. Uh, the surge pits, there's one pit for each pump, both of those inside in the interior of that vault. A lot of, uh, missing concrete inside there, a lot of exposed rebar inside of there as well. Uh, we're fearful, uh, of a collapse of that, of that vault. Uh, the small pump, uh, needs to be replaced. So we, we replaced the large pump last year. Uh, we're looking at, at a minimum, replacing that, uh, small pool pump. All four, all four heaters are not operational. Those need to be all replaced. Uh, and, uh, both pools need a, um, replastering of, of both pools. Uh, we talked about the pump house, not only are the vaults failing, but in, internal in the, uh, the concrete internal in the pump house is also a lot of cracking going on as well that needs to be addressed. And our chlorine and acid pump analyzer needs to be upgraded as well. That's if we were to just wanted to keep what we have operational. Those are the things we'd need to be looking at, uh, replacing. And just here's some real quick pictures. Stop me, but, uh, these that, what on the left is the entrance to that surge pump. There's a vault underneath that. To the right is the, uh, a small pool pump that looks like. To the left, we have a, uh, that's the, what it, what a filter looks like, uh, for the, uh, small pump. The large, uh, pull, large pool pump is on your right-hand side that we recently replaced. And then again, very similar, there's the small pump with the, um, on the left, that horizontal tube. Then you see that, uh, vault that goes down and below. And then you have, uh, a large pool pump with a different angle. And those are the large pool filters on the three on the left sides is US filter. And then if we were to touch this room, we would obviously, uh, want to upgrade the electrical panel, uh, you know, it being of that age, you'd want to, uh, start fresh with the new electrical panel. Okay, I'll stop here, uh, and I'll turn it over to Gus Hernandez, who will go over, uh, the benefits of the aquatic center, uh, the programming and the staffing needs. Regardless of what option we pick.
Thank you, Noe. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. We are now in the month of May and May marks National Water Safety Month. And that's important because drowning is the leading cause of death in children in the United States. Every year, more than thirty-nine hundred deaths from drowning occur nationwide. That's far too many lives lost. As Parks and Recreation professionals. Our department plays in a, a critical role, not only in offering safety, excuse me, water safety classes. But also in supporting the mental health, well-being of our community, uh, residents. And a critical role in providing access to safe and inclusive aquatics facilities and aquatics programming. So what are some of the benefits of aquatics programming? Swimming is the fourth most popular activity in the United States. One of the reasons why it's so popular is because it's, it's not only refreshing and relaxing and therapeutic. But it's also a great way to engage in low-impact physical activity, putting less stress on the body's joints. Just two and a half hours per week of aerobic physical activities such as swimming can reduce the risk of chronic illness. Swimming can also lead to improved health, uh, improved health for people with diabetes and heart disease. And these are all important issues in our department because we promote, uh, we, we want to promote a healthy lifestyle. We want to promote health and wellness amongst our community members. So some of the demographics, uh, and the pro, programming type, uh, in our aquatic center. So who ends up benefiting from healthy aquatics programming? And the answer to this is unlike many of our other park amenities or facilities. The aquatic center is very unique because a lot of people can, can benefit from it, from infants all the way to older adults. Infants and toddlers benefit as they can take mommy and me swim lessons. And those mommy and me swim lessons are critical because it teaches kids lifesaving techniques. One of the first things that our lifeguards teach are those lifesaving floating mechanisms that can teach a child to float and save their life. Youth benefit because they can take lessons or they can come to our rec swim programs. And when they come to our rec swim programs, parents know that they're going to be well taken care of. Teenagers benefit because they can prepare, excuse me, because they can participate in a junior lifeguard program. Adults benefit because, um, they can benefit from lap swim. They can also benefit by being able to host a birthday party at our facility. And for those adults that have never learned how to swim, we do also offer, uh, adult private swim lessons as well. The older adult population benefits by being able to engage in low-impact water aerobics, water rocking and even lap swim. The aquatic center is another place for the seniors to socialize and it's a place where they come to meet their friends. This also decreases their social, social isolation, which was very prevalent during the pandemic. Our employees and our businesses benefit because they're, because they're able to sign up their kids for affordable swim lessons. And they're able to participate in swim or water aerobics. Our aquatic center has partnered over the years with several businesses to offer opportunities to the business community to allow their employees to, to swim in our, in our pool. So our, our aquatic center is truly a hub, a community hub, a place where people, uh, can come together, create community. And create long-lasting memories that'll last a lifetime. So in general, uh, the aquatic center has been seasonal since twenty thirteen. And operates from May through October with twenty part-time staff and recruitment, recruitment efforts beginning in January. And we, we start in January so that we can onboard them, get them trained, uh, in April and in May, so that we can start our aquatic season in June. And that's an important note to, uh, take down because when we are ready to reopen, those are going to be our target dates, uh, for, for reopening. As far as staffing is concerned, um, on the table there, you see, uh, on the left, you see the classification of the employee at the, uh, at the aquatic center. You see the quantity of, uh, of staffing that we need. And there you see pre-two thousand thirteen levels. So that was when we operated the aquatic center on a more, uh, year-round basis. And then twenty thirteen to present is when we're operating on a more seasonal basis. So we operated, uh, right now, essentially about six months out of the year. You notice a difference of about ten different staff members there, along with one, uh, full-time aquatic manager. Lifeguards, um, are not only important to the aquatic center, but lifeguards also attend day camp trips to water parks and beaches. Lifeguards provide first aid and CPR training courses throughout the year. And they also serve as first aid responders, um, and, and provide assistance at special events. Um, and then in addition to that, they also train all of our Parks and Recreation staff so that they can properly work our waiting pools. And I think, uh, Leanne and some of our lifeguards are featured there in some of those pictures. Yeah. So this here is a typical summer schedule. On the top left, you see what a weekday schedule looks like. Uh, we're open from about six AM to about eight thirty PM with different programming. On Saturdays, we're open from about ten AM to eight PM. And on Sundays, we're open for a long half day there. So our aquatic center is definitely utilized throughout the year when, when it is open. Some of the year-round programming that we haven't offered since before twenty thirteen includes lifeguard training classes. Water safety instructor classes, spring swim lessons, spring break rec swim, water polo classes, synchronized swimming. Year-round swim team, intro to scuba, end of year school swim parties and school-based rentals. So these, these are some programs that we would consider bringing back, um, depending on the type of project that we proceed with. Um, if we're making this, uh, great investment into the aquatic center, we'd want to consider, uh, bringing back a year-round aquatics, uh, programming. This is a cost analysis of the last six fiscal years of the aquatic center. This only includes the Parks and Recreation costs. This does not include any maintenance costs. As the maintenance does not recover any costs and is fully subsidized by the general fund. So, um, if you notice the last full year of operation, that was pre-COVID, so our last normal year was fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, one thing that's been consistent is that, um, we've, uh, found that we, uh, essentially recover about the, about a third of our cost. So the city subsidizes this program by about two-thirds.
I have a question real quick. What was the jump so much in eighteen and nineteen to almost two hundred, one hundred ninety-six thousand?
Just, uh, that's just salaries. So based on the, uh, increases potentially. Um, I'd have to dive into it a little bit deeper to get you an exact cost of that. I'm sure we can work with our finance team to figure that out. Right. And then the last two years, those are estimates, um, as the fiscal years have not, um, officially been closed out. Any other questions?
I, so those are the salaries for year rounds, but our supervisors. When there's nothing going on in the pool, they're being utilized other parts in the city, correct?
Correct. So.
This isn't just a summer salary. This is because they're af- after the pools close, these are being, they're, uh, management, everything being used in other parts of Park and Rec then.
Right. So even though the aquatic center is closed, there are things on the background that do take place. Um, there's a program evaluation, there's assessments, um, there's planning for the next, for the next year. And so their salaries are, um, I guess we, we take into account the full year of, of a salary for a full-time employee. All right. I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to Noe.
Thanks, Gus. Okay. So this is a facility that we've recently, uh, poured some money into. This is just reminding you, we did replace all three roofs at the main building, the pump house and snack bar. We did also replace the soffit. Remember, if you remember that, we used insurance money as that fell down, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then we also replaced that large pool pump motor, total of approximately half million dollars we spent the last two years on this facility. So we did talk to some of our neighbors and they're also having issues with their, their pools, their aquatic centers. If you're familiar with Smith Park and Pico Rivera, they're having very similar issues with their decking and their plastering of their actual pool. They've been closed for about approximately five years. And talking with them this morning, they're actually out for RFP for design and they budgeted approximately nine million dollars to replace their pool. Bell Gardens, I don't have their numbers, but they've also been, we're at Ford Park. They've also been closed for about five years. Linwood, we're at Linwood Park, they've been closed for about two years. They've taken a different approach though is they've actually phased their project, an interior and exterior. And I think they're starting construction right now on the interior and they're going to put minor repairs on the exterior to have a season this year. And as soon as this season's over, then they'll work on the exterior improvements. So we have before you is, we have four options. Obviously, if you have other options, we'd like to hear those as well. So the first option, option one is to repair the existing facility as is. So all those things that I told you we need to fix, you would give us that direction to go fix all those things. And then we could open the facility. Option two would be to demolish the existing facility and build an entire new facility. Basically, creating a whiteboard, you tell me what you want to see. Is it exactly the same as what we have? Now we have the ability to add things because we started basically from, from scratch. Option three would be to close the facility, redevelop the property with something other than the Aquatic Center. And then option four would kind of be a hybrid between number one and number two. So not just repairing what's existing, but also not demoing the whole thing and starting from scratch, looking at what we can salvage, what we want, what we try to want to, want to keep that's feasible to try to save some of the money and lower the costs and try to do that. We also have the opportunity to incorporate new amenities. So I heard like a sauna or splash pad or what have you in terms of what you're looking at. Again, if we do any of the options, we'd have to look at to make sure we need to comply with the current codes. Depending on how much we do with the existing, we may still be grandfathered. That's something we would want to work with the regulating agency to make sure that if we needed to comply with new codes, obviously that would increase the cost. So we talked about the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five CIP in that there was three projects listed. I'm not, don't want you to be as concerned about what it says the projects are. Those are just placeholders for dollar amounts. So as of today, we have set aside three point six, six-two million dollars for the Aquatic Center. So if whatever we do is under three point six million, we don't need any more money. We could, we could do it all on that. Anything above that, we either need to allocate new monies from our CIP UUT or we need to go find monies to fill in that gap. So just for comparison purposes, I thought I'd tell you what the new Pioneer, or sorry, the Whittier Aquatics at Pioneer High School, just for comparison purposes. Our pool, we have a large pool and a small pool. It's twenty-five meters by twenty-five yards is our large pool. Our small pool, twelve and a half meters by twenty-five yards. And our main building has a lobby, lockers, showers, a training room and some offices for our staff. We have a separate water pump house, a separate snack bar vending machine building, bleachers, a picnic area, a parking lot and landscaping. And potential amenities, again, these are just some suggestions, would be a splash, splash pad. However, right now the facility is open five or six months, depending on the weather. If it's, if we're going to remain at five or six months, we would highly suggest creating a separate entrance so that the splash pad can be open for three hundred sixty-five days a year. Obviously, if you decide to keep the facility open for three hundred sixty-five days, that would be a non-issue as the splash pad would be open every day that the Aquatic Center is open as well. We talked about looking into a slide or like a lazy river. Unfortunately, in looking at that, it would fall under the OSHA code thirty-one ninety-five point one-one. Article three, it would be categorized as a permanent amusement park ride, which we would not suggest recommending going in that direction. The increased costs, the liability, as well as the increased staffing that is necessary once you go under the category of amusement park. There's potential to look at diving boards or springboards and springboards could be at varying heights. For example, either a one meter or a three meter. And this is an aerial view of what our Aquatic Center looks like today. You see the small pool to the right, the main pool. To the left of that is the bleacher area, the vending area. To the north is a vacant grass area where we talked about maybe potentially looking at a splash pad. To the left of that is the picnic area and to the right of the grass area is the pump house. Parking is to the right. And then on the south side is the entrance to the Clark Estate driveway. Okay, let's talk about the Whittier Aquatics at Pioneer High School. So two pools, competition pool and a practice pool, fifty meters by twenty-five yards and the practice pool, twenty-five meters by twenty-five yards. So they're essentially twice as large as our pools, both pools, the small and the large. They have a LEED gold building. I won't get too much into what the LEED is. It's just a lot about sustainability and environmental efficiencies of that building that obviously adds to the cost once you start doing stuff like that. So that's something that I would have you consider maybe not going all the way to LEED gold to decrease our costs. Again, their main building has a lobby, lockers, a classroom, training room, very similar to us, mechanical electrical room, bleachers, a small park, a fitness area, two springboards, one meter and three meter, a parking lot, lighting and landscaping. And these are renderings of what their facility will look like. See if I can orient you here. This street right here is Washington Boulevard and this is Pioneer. So you see the large pool, the small pool with the building offset. And likewise on here, this is Washington on this side, this is Pioneer. And then you see the same, the pool, two pools, a building, and this is their park fitness area on the outside. And this is their parking lot. I missed something, sorry. Their cost. So a lot of it because of their large size of those pools and that LEED gold building, their price tag is thirty million dollars for that one pool. So again, this is the start of the conversation here. We would like to get more, more feedback from the community. We are asking you for some suggestions at a minimum. We have designated to go to the Parks and Recreation Committee on June first with the same presentation here. And any tweaks or suggestions that you have that we change, we will gladly do that. We also wanted to reach out to our youth leadership committee to see what their feelings are about the Aquatic Center. We've also, would like to, for you to consider possibly doing a citywide survey. Or if there's any other meetings that you want us to do, whether it be a separate town hall meeting or any other groups that you want us to reach out to, we're happy to consider that, to be able to get more feedback from the community. So our next steps after today, we'll take what direction you provide us with. Obviously, we're talking about four alternatives. We're trying to narrow that down at least one or two. One, just to be able to go and draft an RFP. I'm going to have to hire somebody. This is a highly specialized field in terms of aquatics. We go out for an RFP. I need to, I need to do a scope of work of what we're asking them to do, to be able to look at. The more information I can get, the better product I get in return. What we like to see though is some preliminary designs with some alternatives and most importantly, with some costs on there. So that way, we can see what the different amenities cost, different layouts. So we can, we can analyze and compare. And then once we get those, we would come back to you, obviously incorporating the feedback that we get from the community engagement. And then we can have a follow-up conversation with more detail now. Detailed amenities, detailed layouts and detailed costs. From that, the goal would be to pick a selected design or preferred design. And then we could either go out for another RFP or whatever process we can, we can do. We have to hire somebody to do final design plans and estimates for us. Again, not a short process, right? We're looking at anywhere between three to four years. As you've seen, a lot of those other pools are down because that's how long it's taking them to get the feedback from the community, to figure out what direction they want to go forward in, to look at preliminary designs and look at all different alternatives. And then select the design, design that, bid it out, right? And I mean, I might even talk about funding it. That's a whole different story, right? Just talking about the procurement part, design it. Then you go out to bid and you award a contract, have somebody construct it. That's what we're looking at. And we're looking at ways to try to make that go faster. That, that is, that's our goal. Some things to consider as you're talking about making recommendations here is how much do we want to spend on this Aquatic Center? So for comparison purposes, we did the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five CIP, four years worth of projects in our entire city. And from the UUT, which we would probably get this money from for this pool, we designated fifteen point eight million dollars. We're probably looking at anywhere between nine, ten million dollars with the new Aquatic Center. Two pools with the building, all new water infrastructure. And that's not even adding more things that we may think about adding. We have to think about a year round. So if you're going to invest ten million dollars, why do you want a facility to be open only five or six months out of the year? I'd highly recommend that you go twelve months out of the year. That also comes with the price tag. And if I do that, now I have to go back to those staffing levels that Gus talked about. Instead of fifteen people, we're talking about twenty-two people. That's an added cost on top of the ten million dollars. Now we have to pay those people. And again, we talked about it before, it was said earlier. This is basically a program that's a service to the community. We're not going to make money off of this. We're not going to get a return off of this. It's heavily subsidized. That's, that's what it is. And again, if we do demo those buildings, if that's the way we want to go, we just put in five hundred thousand dollars into those buildings, we would basically be losing, losing out on that money by demoing those buildings. So again, you have before you to give us some direction. That's what I'm looking for is any suggestions or ideas so that we can go hire somebody to come back with some preliminary designs and some cost estimates to bring back to you. Happy to take questions.
Does our council have any questions?
Oh, I've, yeah, I do. Well, first off, I mean, I know when you brought up the survey, I mean, the biggest thing is like, as you heard up here was the community involvement. So I think a survey would actually be something that's plausible just so we can get feedback from the community as quick as possible. And also, I mean, is there any potential way that the GoSFS app that we utilize? Is there any way that maybe we can also have them just put their input on there too? Or any type of, or if we can create some kind of apps, app system or anything else that they can give their feedback on? I mean, I don't know if there's something we can, we can look into that. Because I think that's one of the easiest things that our community's been utilizing quite strongly is a GoSFS app. And not only that, it gives them an opportunity to actually use it more frequently for when it comes to our street repairs or potholes or anything else.
I'm happy to tell you, I'm not the most savvy in apps or social media, but we have a staff that does know that. So we'll be in contact with them to see how we can get that information.
And of course, our social media, I mean, utilizing that just to get that information out there. And of course, just giving them a link so they can actually, you know, partake with their comments instead of just leaving it on a social media where everybody just becomes keyboard warriors, where they can actually, you know, give their information and say what they would like to specify. And of course, getting the local Little Lake School District, the, the, the three schools that we have in Santa Fe Springs, on St. Pius, Santa Fe Springs Christian School. Let's also look at Santa Fe High School, St. Paul High School and Rancho Center Retus. Am I missing any other schools? Those are the three Little Lake. So if we can utilize all those individuals, and of course, I mean, I would even go to Fulton Wells and ask the senior community, maybe have something where you can do a study session over there and just talk to them. I do believe they have a facility that can be utilized that you can, you know, they can all show up and do that. And of course, the more committees you guys can talk to, the better off instead of just only Parks and Rec, but.
Yeah, if you have any suggestions and who else we can talk to, we'd be happy to hear that.
All right. We have our historical. You okay? Yeah. So we have our historical. What other committees? Are you guys from the senior advisory, family, human services? And we could even ask our women's club or
What about we get the lifeguards who are in there?
No, the lifeguards are pretty much, those are the, one of the key ingredients because, you know, but they would have to be all together. If you guys don't mind getting together with all them, but it's just getting everybody as a whole.
Or just if we can, because it's, they have such different lifestyles now. I mean, everybody's everywhere. Maybe we can have like somehow, since, you know, the lifeguards still keep in touch. Maybe you guys could talk to each other and maybe we can have like a center point of like maybe an email or something of getting together and letting us know. I mean, you guys are still so close and you guys have, you know, the connections. Whichever way it works for you guys to get us information, I think that'd be great.
Excuse me, Noe. I think also a town hall meeting like you had discussed. We definitely need one of those, get everybody together.
Even if, yeah, even if you guys can go with the different community members, if they would like to check out other, other pools and other areas. You know, I know we do that where you set up adventures, whether to go to a baseball game or go pick apples, but maybe we can do something where, you know, we can actually go somewhere or some of our community can go to different places just to see some of these other pools, to see what they like to see and maybe bring that information back here. So.
Also, Noe, Santa Fe High School pool, while ours is going through the renovation or we're deciding what to do, would we be able to use Santa Fe High School pool for our activities or?
Yeah. So one of the challenges is, I don't know if you recall earlier, in an earlier slide, we missed the window for hiring our lifeguards. And so right now, we really just don't, we, we don't have the staffing levels to support any in-house programming at another facility. What we are working on is a weekly trip to a surrounding pool. So we would utilize Whittier, City of Whittier Pool, City of Norwalk and City of La Marada to take kids on a weekly bus trip to those facilities.
Also, Mayor, the Santa Fe is also in the process of remodeling their pool too.
So they're closed.
So I don't know if they're going to start this summer or
Yeah, and we, we did confirm with the vice principal over at Santa Fe High School and they did confirm that although there's no immediate plan to start renovations, their pool is reaching the end of its life cycle as well. And it will be undergoing extensive renovations sometime in the future.
So I, I think what you're telling me is to do some kind of a citywide survey. We could target those different groups, the ones we can meet in person, we can also try to target that as well.
Yes.
I got a comment real quick. You know, this is great that everybody's here and seeing the cost of what it's going to take us to redevelop this pool. And, you know, we need your help to sell it to the rest of this community because when we say that it's going to cost nine million dollars to, you know, revamp the pool, a lot of our residents are going to say, oh, no, we're not going to spend that money on doing this. And us five up here are the ones that have to face the facts of the people that do want it and the people that don't want it and what value it brings to our community. But it's a great effort for all of us together to actually come out and help us sell this to our community by getting other people involved, telling your family, telling your friends what you've learned and seen today because it really does help. The more people that understand and know, the easier it is for us to get that information, that job out. Because today's prices of Noe saying it's nine million dollars, that's what he's basing it on today. In three years, we can have ten percent inflation for the next three years and it's going to be another twenty, thirty percent more. So it's very important for all of us to communicate with our friends and neighbors to let them know this is not something that is going to be cheap, but it's definitely something that should be warranted. And we have to make sure that we keep reinvesting in our infrastructure because if not, this is what happens. We, we need We need to maintain our parks, the aquatic centers, the streets, everything. Because then it's going to cost us double and triple the amount of money if we don't upkeep those things. So I just want to say, you know, as a community, as a council, we need to all work together to get this message out. Thank you, guys.
All right. Are there any further questions?
Just more. Noah, I know that we have different phases with from the the planning, the design, everything typically, which one is the longest phase? Trying to come up with what kind of design we even want?
No, if I, if I'm, let's just say I'm being conservative here, we're being, everything goes right.
Yeah.
Probably going to take us a year to figure out what to do, right? By the time we do all the community engagement, looking at preliminary designs, it'll probably take us to the end of this year to do that, right? That's seven months. Then we got to go hire somebody. Say it takes them a year, everything goes right to design it. Right? And then we go out to bid and construct it. Say it takes them eighteen months, fifteen months on average. That's if everything goes right, it's three and a half years.
As costs are rising. And I know that we want to engage as many people, as much of the community as as possible. But if we start getting all these different, which we should, the schools, the community, everybody involved. Can I suggest like part of Metro, you know, they had scoping meetings scheduled specifically in in different areas. Of course, they went countywide, but just scoping meetings just within ourselves. So as far as like the Fulton Wells, the residents go, we might have just one specific one for them, or maybe they could come down to the Betty Wilson Center, let the schools know to put it on their own website, say we're going to have a scoping meeting at a certain location and maybe have two or three at different times of day so they could attend them. So we could get through this phase as quick as possible, start our design. But letting everybody know, just let them know, like Santa Fe, for example, let them put on their website so they can notify all their people, all their kids and residents. And just so we could just schedule these scoping meetings wherever they could come and attend as soon as we can.
Mayor, may I? I'm just want, I think if we just keep our residents informed, yeah, it seems like a long time, three years. It does sound like a long time. But I think if we keep the residents informed, letting them know the process, the three years won't seem that long because everybody will be involved. It'd be, we would see progress, we would see something happening. Three years does seem long, but I think just the fact of everybody being involved in us as a city, let the residents know exactly what's going on, is going to make a difference. Because it's going to be, you know, I don't want to bring this up, but it's like, one of those things like, we all know Sonic is coming, but we don't know when it's coming. You know, we know, but because there's no much of an advertiser, everybody's guessing. This could be different. We learned from how we are not doing what we should do and letting everything be transparent. Let's make it with this, let's be as transparent as possible and let them know this is what's going to happen. This is where we're at, engagement. And I think that's going to help the process a lot more and people are going to get more excited about what's going to be coming. And it's going to be here for another twenty, thirty years.
And I'm sorry.
Noah, I wanted to also say this one, two and four. While we're in the process of meeting with our residents and getting feedback from everyone on what we should do, we should come up with some numbers too, because that's what's going to happen after our residents and us make a decision, we're still going to need those numbers. Why don't we try and utilize our time, get the numbers right now? Start meeting with our residents, our community committees. And then we'll have that done while we're in the process of deciding what we want to do. You had the one, two and four up there, demolishing is, to us, it's not an option. So why don't we start on that right now?
So so me have some follow-up questions for you now. How many pools are we putting back? What size?
Keep it the same.
Are we keeping the buildings as is or are we going to demo those buildings?
Well, that's why there's one, two and four.
Right, but if I'm going to hire somebody to go give us those alternatives and they're going to ask me, what do you want me to do? I'll give you, I'll give you a layout and a price for whatever you want, but you have to tell me what to do. So.
I think the remodels of the bill, I don't think the building coming down would be an option. I think we would rather, because we're not going to throw away a half a million dollars that we've already put into it. So remodeling the interior, the locker rooms, the the office and stuff like that. But then getting the information, keeping keeping the big pool for sure. If we want to add the splash pad and that and go from there. But adding other amenities to the pool, are we putting, you know, do we look into a jacuzzi, another set of Jacuzzis? Those types of things, how we can do, we can do a lot of the outside hardscape stuff relatively easier than we can building something. So I think if we keep a lot of the same structure, time would be of less of the construction side of it. So I think, you know, if we, if we're okay with the big pool, figuring out a splash pad, obviously redoing, if we have to redo the the pump house or kind of figuring out how to remodel that area. I think the hardscape part of it, but I think the the building itself should stay intact and just remodel the interior of it.
I mean, that's the whole point of the the infrastructure there, the restructuring, is that making sure that whatever we put back into it. And even like, you know, the whole point of asking the community, I mean, to make a decision. I mean, I know Jay's bringing up about doing the pool and I know we all want a large pool there and maybe the splash pad to add with it. But we have to make sure, you know, we talk to the residents, talk to other people, see what they have to say. I mean, you know, we have to make sure that we take these meetings to them. You know, make it easy, make it feasible for them to, whether it be at the schools, you know, using their NPR rooms, whether it be at the churches, locals churches, and they want to, you know, utilize those facilities that, you know, their areas to to host a meeting, you know. The quicker we get it out there, the quicker we can get an answer. I mean, so I think that's, you know, the easiest thing before we could even move forward. I mean, I I know that that's something that we've talked about, a splash pad and a pool.
Well, splash pad, we have to also make it ADA compliant. So the splash pad would make us ADA compliant.
Mm-hmm. So that's just something that.
There's a pool, there's a pool itself too. You have to make that ADA compliant too. So ramp it down or you do what we do today and we have the chairs, the lifts that allow you to go in. So there's different options. Let me give you an alternative, because I I think it's kind of unfair to tell you, to tell me what you want right now in a half, an hour study session. I think that we should do our community engagement first.
Yes.
And in the next three or four months, reach out, get all that feedback, compile that, and then we can bring that back to you. And we can also meet with you as well, right? And just kind of similar with the CIP. And get your feedback as well, come back in another study session and say, look, we've gone out to the community and this is the feedback we've gotten from the community in terms of what they like to see. And then you can either say yes or no, you want us to go forward with looking at that. You can select several alternatives to look at. But at least now we have a better idea in terms of what amenities that we're looking for. For example, if you eliminate that small pool, Gus is going to tell you that you're eliminating a lot of the programming that come with it as well. So are you willing to do that? I'm not sure. So I think it's better that we go out to the community, get their input, then we could put a matrix together of all the amenities that they're looking at. And then we can tell you those impacts, right? If you if you remove something, that it's impacting this, right? Or if you add this, maybe you're taking away something else. It's a trade-off. I think that is what I'll recommend to you today is that we do the community engagement. During that time, we also do not only the community engagement, but we also, I can sit with each of you as well and kind of just get feedback in terms of what amenities. We always talk about wants and needs, right? I'm telling you guys that constantly, right? So a one is like the water infrastructure, you're going to need a pump, you need chemicals, right? That's, you're going to need that. Needs or or wants could be, like you said, the splash pad or the sauna. That's the kind of stuff we need to have a conversation on. So if you don't, if you're okay with that, I think that we should, we should do that is before we make hard decisions today, let's get input from the community.
And also, if we can have bilingual translators when you guys are doing these, yes, for the town hall or any community meetings, just so there's people.
Why don't we set timeframes for these community meetings, maybe the the end of June, the end of July, the end of August?
At least the end of July, but then we could probably have a study session, the first, you know, first meeting of July and then have a next study session after July, so in August. At least that gives us two.
Try to have the community engagement in in those, in the summer months. And then during that, let him get his information. We can still put it out there on social media and letting people know and understand and gather all that information. And then maybe by the end of September, October, if everything's perfect, we'll have an idea of what the community is asking for, what we're going to ask for. And then by the end of the year, give them a direction to have somebody go out and on a perfect world, right, Noah?
Yeah, Ray always tells me that to tell you no, but I don't think July is realistic. I think if we're going to do this right, you do it right, you don't, you don't rush it. You don't cut corners, you do it the right way. And there's one of me making this presentation, right? I got to be able to get to all these groups and they're not all.
Who's the guy behind you? See that, Gus? He's not even letting you.
That's a great point, because I did ask the county lessons learned. I like, I like learning from other people's mistakes not to make them twice. And one thing we didn't do today is we didn't give you a number. And we did that on purpose, because they said that their biggest failures for aquatic centers has been giving the number and then trying to back into that number. Because they take, they take things out that they shouldn't have and it actually makes the final product worse. The first thing they said is go and do a scoping, get what you want first. And then, once you figure out what you want, then put a price tag to that. And then figure if you can afford it. If you can't afford that, then you start taking things off. But you don't want to say we're going to commit to a certain number and that's all we're going to do. Why are we going to make the the number the end game? The end game should be the finished product.
Yes, sir.
Number two, do not phase it. Again, that's your, it's your, it's your choice, but I would say not to phase this thing. If we're going to build it, let's build it right one time. Number three, we need to find the money. Okay, so we need to get full funding. We don't want to start something and we only have five million dollars and we know a project cost is ten. Let's go and fight to get the full funding before we start doing the design. The other thing they told me is that Parks and Recs does their projects, because they don't like engineers doing these projects. So if Gus would like to lead the project, I'm more than happy to acquiesce and let him take the lead.
Good job, Gus. Way to volunteer.
But in all seriousness, this is going to be a team effort here. I want to thank the staff, Gus's staff, my staff for collecting all this information. My job is easy. I just present the information. They're the ones doing all the hard work. Nobody asked me, are we going to keep on maintaining the pool? Because that's been asked of me and they say, well, why are we going to maintain it if we're not going to open for season? I'll say like this, if you have a car, you drive your car, right? You don't let your car sit in the driveway, because as it gets idle, it gets worse. So you'll still see our staff maintaining it, using the chemicals, there'll be water in it just as if it was operational to keep whatever equipment that we have there operational, because we don't know what we're going to select in the alternative.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
Also, Gus, I had a question for you as we are getting involved with all of this and scheduling our town meetings. I want, I would like to know if you can let the council know when you, what programs we have where you're transporting our youth, our seniors, anybody that would like to go on these different excursions to other facilities. We would like to know that. And also, we would like to utilize what's there with the barbecue pits, the shade, the patio area, because there's two sides that I noticed where the Jacuzzis were. We need to utilize that because our residents, it's a good backdrop. We can't use the pool, but it's a good backdrop. So, you know, we can have, utilize it for birthday parties or just different type of events. So let's, let's talk and see how we can get that going.
Most certainly.
Thank you.
Our staff right now, we're currently finalizing the schedule for the summer. We weren't ready to produce it in the, in the All Things Santa Fe Springs Quarterly as we were waiting responses from the different cities. We're slowly getting those responses in and we hope to have that scheduled out on our website in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, I would like to adjourn this meeting at six twenty-six.